Do this because. Ah, Natish. All right, 4:00 PM, calling the meeting to order. Vina, would you like to call the roll?
Councilmember Chipiano. Mayor Juan.
I am here. All right, public comment on non-agenda items. If there's anyone online that would like to make comment on non-agenda items.
We have no hands raised on Zoom at this time.
All right, let us close item two, public comment, and move to action items. Angelene, will you be presenting today or Natish? Okay, so this is the fiscal year 23 mid-year budget update. Would you like a moment to get situated or are you ready to go?
Yeah, I'm good. Our mayor will kick, oh, our city manager will kick it off.
All right, so I'll go ahead and get this started. The first thing I would like to mention before we start is the Zoom format for this meeting is a little different than we've done in the past. We've set it up with a stationary camera to save costs. So that's our first action here today is saving money for the City of Clayton. Just want to let you know that this is a mid-year budget update for fiscal year 23, began in July 1st of 2022, and it goes until June 30th of 2023. The report that you have today before you is for the period of the first six months, which is through December 31st. However, the investment income portion of it is through February. So that is actually reported through what would be eight months, not just six months. So that's a little bit different. And when Natish explains to you the investment income part of it, you'll understand why the numbers are what they are. The total general fund operating budget is $5.4 million excluding ARPA. And I think it's important to make that distinction since ARPA is a one-time funding source, and we don't want to confuse the general fund operating budget. There was a balance transfer last year from ARPA of $127,000 in order to balance the budget. And from our projections, so far this year, it appears that the approved budget will, we will have an additional $81,000 in revenues over what we had projected, with the expenses being approximately the same. So we're showing that as being a good position for us to be in. But that's just what we're projecting going forward. Our, the $81,000 is comprised of property taxes, vehicle license fees, franchise fees, and interest earnings. And so those are, and in the staff report, you can see those are highlighted as far as the additional revenue expenditures. We're not making any changes to the revenues at this point, although we are seeing salary savings based on vacancies in positions. But those are being offset, to some extent, by some of the other positions that we've had to add to provide the services for the people that are missing. So we're not capturing the salary savings, but we are expecting to have salary savings at the end of the year. This report is divided into several sections. You have the mid-year budget. We have the ARPA portion of it that we'd like to take a minute to discuss, our current funds that we have available. We have the investment policy that we would like to give you an update on, and then we'd also like to give you an update on the fee study that's being done. And then with all of that, we'd like for the committee members to discuss, ask questions, provide input and direction. And then we intend to come back with this to the full city council on April 4th, which will coincide with the date that we're expecting the Climate Tech project to come back to city council. So we kind of would like to coordinate those two so that any revenue needs from the Climate Tech project will be able to be captured in the mid-year budget discussion. So with that, I'd like to turn it over to our financial consultant, Natish Sharma, and he will also be assisted by our finance director, Angelene Loffler.
Can I ask one question first?
Certainly.
Did, are we, are we set on the April 4th? Are we pretty much pushing out the March 21 potential?
That's correct. According to Climate Tech, that's the date based upon everything they need to do between now and then to get before the city council.
Okay.
Well, we have a, good evening, Mr. Mayor and council member. I'm Natish Sharma, finance consultant, used to be a finance director, but I'm so glad Angelene is here to help out. But the item before you is a mid-year budget adjustment, and we will cover a few items that is in the attached PowerPoint slide. The staff report is very comprehensive. My goal is not to repeat the staff report, but more talk about the, what are some of the common messages, and then go through some of the big items in there. Talk about the investment policy update. This was an item that was brought to you before, and we, at that time, did not get a direction, but we're here to seek direction. And then also talk about the book of fees and the work we have done so far. And the schedule is attached as part of your report as well. So, next slide. So this slide is basically, talks about the City of Clayton's mission and vision, mission statement and values. What's important about this slide and mission and vision is that the budget is put together in alignment with the city's mission and the values we stand by. So even the things that we are projecting, we wanted to make sure that we have responsibility, and we also are continuous progress in the things that we are working on. And then values, of course, is excellence, integrity, respect, and teamwork. That, those are the core fundamentals of City of Clayton and the staff report, and the work that has been done is in alignment with that. Next page. So, before jumping into the numbers, let me just maybe take a step back. If you remember, if you were in council last year when this budget was getting adopted, the original budget before adoption had a structural deficit of about $127,000. The council, at that time, made budgetary adjustment to transfer money from the pandemic reserve fund for items that are listed. You know, few items, there was normally general fund expenditures, but eligible for ARPA funds, and transferred the money from the pandemic reserve fund, which is the Fund 111, to balance the budget. The budget, as it was presented, was about 6.4 million or so, and that included one-time monies. So the general fund true budget is about 5.4 million. So just also wanted to point that out. The revenues and expenses that is presented here, the transfers in and out, they actually net out to, by the same amount, 1.4 million for the ARPA funds. The reason is the money has been received in one fund, which is the grant fund, and then it's transferred to general fund, and then it's transferred to pandemic reserve fund. So just to make sure that the flow of the money is clean, and so it shows both sides. But if you take those sides, both of those are from the revenues and expenditures, you're looking at about $5.4 million. So that was the table one in your staff report is basically to highlight that the total general fund budget and what the one-time budget adjustment that was approved by the council at that time. We will continue to monitor the year as we go along the year. At the year ends, we may be in a position to have some projected savings, primarily from revenue increases, but also, as our city manager pointed out, maybe some salary savings. And at that point, we can have that discussion to see, the original intent was to balance the budget with pandemic fund. Should we put that money back into the pandemic fund that we use for future or put it in reserve fund? But those decisions are not needed now. But those are some of the things that we'll be working on as we go close to the year end. So, moving on to the, some of the core revenue sources. One, in your staff report, there's a chart there that illustrates four major revenue source for Clayton, primarily for general fund. And those are property taxes, vehicle in lieu fees, vehicle license fees, which is called sales tax, and franchise fees. Property taxes, from last year, there was a projected increase. However, due to property sales and then also increase in valuation, the property taxes are estimated to increase when compared to budget and by about $41,000. And this is based on the current revenue that has been received. Property taxes, secured property tax rule is received 50% in January, 45% in May, and then 5% in August, which is called a true-up payment. So, so far, we have received 50%, and the other funding will allow us to ensure that at the year end we'll have approximately $41,000 in property taxes.
So, can you just ask a quick question?
I don't think so. I think you have to push the, you may have to push this piece in more.
There we go. So you just said with property tax. This is a projection based, it's for the rest of the year, but it's based on numbers through January 2023?
Yes, yeah, the tax rule is set at the January of 2022 for 2023 year. That's the frozen tax rule. At that time, the county knows that in August, when the, when the tax rule is submitted, and then the property tax revenues are received the following January, it's based on a frozen rule. So what changes in between is supplemental property taxes, which is a separate line item for Clayton and many other agencies, where if the property sells in between the fiscal, in between the frozen rule and the new tax rule, those are captured there. Or any delinquent property taxes or interest on those taxes, those are calculated separately. The secured portion is what we are referring to.
Thank you.
And if you, the, you know, as you may know, that City of Clayton is a small share of the property taxes. 6.6 cents pay for the dollar, that's if this assessed. So majority of the taxes go to school districts or special districts, but Clayton's portion is about 6.6 cents.
Can you hold on one moment?
Mine?
It's not red, so I think they were noticed. Yeah. Is your mic on? Just curious.
Yeah. Hello?
Yep.
But it's red here, so I think that's what you're saying.
It's red here, however, it meant that this device wasn't properly seated within the thing.
Oh, yeah, on the top, okay.
Can I ask you a question about the secure rule? So are you, are you saying, if I'm understanding correctly, that the increase in expected revenue for property tax is rather certain at this point? Because the rule is set, it's just the timing of the payment?
Absolutely, yes.
Would you say that? Okay, thank you.
And that's normal with every county and the way that property tax rules happens in California. That's why property taxes are distributed, you know, three times a year. In some counties, they distribute more early, but for us, this is pretty set in at this point. It's probably going to be maybe a little bit more if there is any more property sales that happens and get captured, but at the moment, this is.
Yeah, our volume is not that high. Does the 5% get accrued in the FY23 or does that roll into FY24?
It gets accrued.
Okay, thank you.
It gets accrued, thank you. The second portion of the major revenue source is the vehicle license fee, and this is basically in 2008, actually, before that, I believe it was 2000, early 2004, I believe, that's part of the Budget Act from the state of California. At that time, the state could actually take money from local agencies. And since then, this law has been passed that they cannot do that. But at that time, what they did is they took property taxes in lieu. They were giving vehicle license fee revenues. So that is still going on at the moment. And this is the second, this is actually the largest revenue source for the city, 22.1%, and we are seeing about $12,000 increase in the, when compared to the approved budget. So, pretty solid. It follows the same sort of methodology as property tax revenues because it's based on assessed valuation of growth. So, sales tax revenues are very difficult to project out at the moment. And we have, year-to-date, collected about $228,000, which is 39% off our budgeted receipts. Sales tax revenues are about two months in arrears because, you know, by the time the state, city, California Department of Franchise Tax Agency, they collect it, and then by the time it's remitted to us, it's two months behind. So with that said, we do work with our consultant, HDL, and even though the consultants may project out a slight increase, but at the moment, due to insufficient data and the way that the property tax revenues have been coming in, we are keeping this as status quo. And then we will be monitoring this and making sure that we can bring this to you. If there is, if there's some substantial increase that happens, we'll bring it to you. Otherwise, we'll report this as part of our annual budget and our year-end revenues. The franchise fees is also the fourth largest component of the general fund revenues. Franchise fees from refuse fund or garbage collections have increased, so we are projecting that as part of our revenue increase. However, it's important to note that franchise fees from cable TV has gone down. And that is, which I've seen this in many agencies because of the switch from cable to streaming and other things. So that's something that we'll continue to monitor to see what opportunities we have. I know a number of agencies are looking to see how they can start collecting on that revenue, which is, you know, when people are switching from cable to, you know, through the streaming. But that is something we are working on. So makes up the, most of the revenue increase as described in here, the $81,000 is basically the supplemental budget appropriation. You'll see general fund expenditures. There's nothing being proposed as a supplemental increase. This is probably the only agency I've seen that is not proposing, which is good because a lot of costs are being, we are very mindful of the costs. We have a small budget. And I honestly will say that looking at even the increases are usually absorbed within the line item of the budget. So right now, there are no costs being proposed. But at the same time, there's no budgetary savings from vacant positions are being proposed because we may fill those positions in the near future. For example, there's a vacant position for assistant to the city manager, and we are using, you know, we may be filling that. So when we are budgeting for positions, one of the disciplines we follow is that personnel savings are usually, at the end, are brought forward to the council as one-time money, either they can be, at that time, decided upon, put into reserves or to pay down liabilities or, you know, any action the council may take. But in media, you don't take personnel savings and project it if there is and apply it to non-personnel costs because we, things change. We may also have, personnel savings are sometimes driven by employees taking healthcare benefits or they may opt out. But if they decide to do that, then we knew employees coming in, and that could be a $20,000 swing if somebody takes it or somebody doesn't take it. So those are the reasons. And then the big, I would say, is the elephant in here is the CalPERS and any substantial changes that happens in CalPERS. And so those are also, part of the, part of our work that happens in 2023 is to do an updated valuation for pension and also for the retiree health. And then that will help us determine that any portion of that personnel cost should be set aside for that increase in cost that we may be seeing that is attributable to 22, 23 or prior years. So those are the reasons that, you know, at the moment, that we're not projecting either the increases or savings. The next item is CIP. No major change in CIP. There are going to be some shifts in CIP within the fund, which is allowed to do, but not between funds. So there's no, changes are being proposed here. And so, moving on to the next section is the American Recovery Act section. We actually put together an analysis for you from '21, what the, you know, the table for in here in the staff report. And my goal is not to go through the whole table, but really wanted to, for accountability and transparency purposes, put it out there, the revenues that have been received and the expenditures that have been incurred. And then the, also the 2023, 22, 23 expenditures, and then the second ARPA fund when it was received. And then our goal is that when we come back on April 4th, we'll put together a recommended ARPA fund spending plan or something similar to that based on our city manager's direction. And at that point, that will be something that, you know, will be discussed at the council level. But right now, this is the ending balance and the accounting of the ARPA funds. Moving on to the next section of the report, it's sort of shifting a little bit from budget, media budget update to a couple of things that we have in motion. Or we have been, we did bring this item forward to the city, to the Finance and Budget Committee. And one of the items is the review of the investment policy. Page nine of nine, it says the updated purchasing, but policy, but I should say investment policy. I'm always thinking about purchasing, so I might just put that in there. So apologies, but for anyone watching out there, it should say investment policy. It was brought back to city, to the Finance Budget Committee for direction. At that time, there was a direction from, members were at opposite ends. But here is an opportunity for this committee to provide any further direction so we can, we can bring this item to city council. Since that time, let me just make it also, a couple of items to your, to note here. We did meet with the investment broker, UBS. We had actually our mayor met, be part of the call as well, too. Very good call, very good discussion to see what are some of the opportunities we are working on. For example, a SWOT analysis on the investments that we are holding on. And then we also looked into the, what I'd say, the checking account and see is there, how much cash flow we need and how much of that cash that we can invest and then have greater investment opportunities. Right now, if you look at the treasury, if we just put money in treasury, which is liquid, you probably get a little bit over 4%. And the money that we have right now is sitting in, in state of California local agency investment pool fund, LEAF fund. So, and this is, LEAF was about 2.45%. So you'll look at about 1.45% change between the two, you know, as the interest earnings. So it allows us to earn more in treasury. So our goal is to, this week, and we have to go through some processes to move the money from LEAF into Bank of America into our investment account. So we go into the process, and we'll start off with half a million dollars for now to move it from LEAF to our investment account. And then gradually make adjustments to ensure that we could get that sweet spot where it doesn't negatively impact our cash flow, our cash operations. So definitely want to move there, move it strategically, and not very slow, but at least get this rolling. And this week, that is one of the goals to make it happen, to move some of that cash sitting in LEAF account and not earning enough, and then move into our treasury for a short period of time. So with that said, we are looking for a little bit of the clarification or feedback from this committee on the investments. The major change that, the major discussion from last committee discussion was the level of investments and the ranges of investment that should be done into each of the categories of securities. So I'm hoping that we get some direction. If not, then we'll definitely bring this to council for open discussion as well, too. We also added some of the things that, you know, changed between the old policy and the new policy, which is attached to your staff report as Attachment A and Attachment B. And so you could see what the substantial changes. So the next item on here is the fee study, the book of fee study. The big part of a fee study is cost, of the cost recovery fee study is the personnel cost. Our new finance director, on her first week of the job, on Friday, we spent quite a bit of time talking to our team about the labor cost methodology. And one of the discussions or directions from this committee was to look at the full labor cost, including the current employees and if they have any unfunded accrued liability, and to make sure we can include that. And that's one of the things we worked with our, with our team and a team with, who does our position budgeting or, and working with them to ensure that we could get full cost accounting. Every dollar that's been paid out, either unfunded liabilities or PERS or workers' comp or, you know, insurance, any healthcare, it's going to be a very comprehensive, by position, by classification. We won't put names in there, but by classification, what is the total comp for that position? And then we also look into the overhead cost to, for us to provide that service, and what is the hourly rate, billable rate was going to be? That's one part of the project, which is a huge part. The other part of the project is basically working with the departments to see how much time is being spent for a particular service that's been provided. And once we get that, it's basically taking the hourly rate, multiplying by the time it takes to provide the service, and coming up with a updated fees. One of the things I will point out to this committee, as I've, in my experience seen, is the smaller agencies, their fees are a little bit higher than surrounding agencies. And there's a couple of reasons. Because of the development that happens in other agencies that are close to it. For example, when I was in West Sacramento, the fees were substantially higher than Sacramento because Sacramento had more development going on. They could spread the cost more to more projects and, and so more people were doing it. So, but for us, I think some of the, it's going to be maybe a little bit of that, a little bit of higher cost because we cannot spread that cost onto too many. But really, our opportunity is to show you what does it cost us to provide that service. And that's one of the things that we're working on. This calendar that's in the, in the staff report, this aligns with a calendar, with the, with the, with the budget calendar that we have, budget calendar, I submitted to our city manager, and we'll probably include that as part of a weekly update to the council. But that will be something that we will be presenting and making sure that we can meet those deadlines. The, not the challenge, I should say, the opportunity is that aligning the two is that we have a lot of in-between meetings. We have the commission, this committee, then we have council, then we have this committee. So we want to make sure we align. So when we come to this committee, then we go to council, then if there's feedbacks, then we can come back to this committee to make sure that we get feedback before it's finalized and in the role that you're serving. So we do have the tentative calendar for budget that we'll be sending out later on. With that said, I will be happy to answer any questions you may have. It's a comprehensive staff report, and the policies are attached. But I'll open it up for any discussions or any questions you may have.
I would suggest that we, there's a lot of information, and they're kind of on different topics. So I would suggest we, I was trying to categorize them. I'd suggest that we kind of group it into like three major areas. The mid-year budget.
Yes.
Related items. The, and then so that would be one. The investment policy, as well as any short-term actions, that would be two. And then anything related to the fee study, that could be three. We could do ARPA as a, as a fourth. That way, it helps us keep it a little organized. Are you okay with that? Mostly you. Yeah. All right. So we can, we can tackle the mid-year budget first. And I guess questions would be good. So if you have, Kim, I know that you had some questions. So if you feel free to go ahead and start, and then we can tag team.
So again, this is my first mid-year budget review. So some of the questions that I had, and I think they're fairly basic. So everything that we saw in the report in bold on the revenue side was a projection through June 30th, 2023. And that totaled $81,940. And so I guess part of what, you know, I kind of look at it as sort of my own checkbook, right? Are we, we know that the salaries, that's kind of a wash right now. There's not really a gain or a loss. There's some one-offs here for recruiting and final payout to city manager. Would you say overall that we're in good shape going into the mid-year review and that we're going to land with this $81,940, more or less, by the time we get to June?
Yes, for the data we have and based on the work we do with our stakeholders, we do have stakeholders that are professionals that do, for example, update us on property taxes and VLF. And we are, at this moment, that's the best estimate we have. And it's more likely will be slightly better than $81,000, we're hoping because there are other revenue categories that we are also trying to see how can we maximize our opportunities. As one of the things that you, that I just mentioned, that moving this $500,000 or even up to $1 million towards, from checking account to, let's just say, your investment account, it can bring you additional $15,000, $20,000 in interest earnings. So that's not part of that. So there's other work that we are going, we are in the process of doing that will further help with that, with that projections.
And if I might add, excuse me. So, so the, I just want to make it clear, the $81,000 is based upon the adopted budget, which included the $127,000 ARPA contribution?
Yeah.
Okay, so we would have to come in with another $46,000 to break even on that account?
Yeah.
That was my follow-up question. I was just going to go there and say, I know we're going to talk about ARPA separately, but that 127, so $81,000 is offsetting that 127, but not erasing it?
It depends on what the council decision is. But council drafted a balanced budget with that, with that action. And we will be having, we'll present to council what the projected surplus or hopefully no deficit at the end will be. no deficit at year end will be. And at that point, it's a council decision to either undo that one twenty-seven or put the money in reserves or put the money towards liability. It's, it's, we'll definitely have some recommendations, but definitely it's a committee and then council decision.
I think, I think a better way to think about it is to not tie them together. The one twenty-seven appropriation at the beginning of the year for expenditures is unrelated to the projected increase in revenue that we're going to see. So to the extent that they happen to be close together, it's coincidental. I would say the hundred and twenty-seven appropriation is unchanged and that won't ever change because that's already been appropriated. And so if there are additional revenues, it doesn't mean that we would unappropriate the spending. It's just kind of like a, it's like a mental exercise to look at them together.
I understand that. And I was just looking for where we're going to land, where we are mid-year. Are we really in a good spot and where we're going to land in June, June 30th?
And as a follow-up to that, why don't we include the things that we know about? Because that's, well, I would say, to the extent that you are, you, the general you, aware of something, if it is, if you know that it's going to happen, I would say it's more appropriate to include it because then you have a point in time where this is, has all the relevant information that we have, rather than here's some things, but we know there's these other things that are off to the side, they're probably going to happen. But as far as a projection goes, I mean, this isn't accrual, we're not recording any income, but if we're going to do forward projections or forecasts or even performance, I think it behooves us to include everything that we know about. We know with reasonable certainty that we are going to gain additional income by rebalancing our operating cash. I mean, that's a, I think that's a given, right? So that's one thing. We know that we could harvest some savings from personnel costs that we have not spent. It's not a wash. I mean, it's a wash only if we don't record it. But, and actually, I mean, that's a, that's, I phrased that poorly. We're not recording anything, but it's only, it's only a wash if we don't list it. But we know for certain that there are costs that we are, that are in the, that we appropriated that we're not going to spend. The delta between the finance position, the delta between the assistance to city manager position and any other associated cost, personnel cost, like the code enforcement officer who, anytime there's vacancies, you're going to have some benefit. And I would say we know what those are already. So I would, I, I think to have a complete picture, we should have those as well. That'd be my recommendation.
And, and so one of the other things that I had in my notes was also, we know there's the one-time payout to city manager, but then there was the cost of hiring Marion Associates for recruiting a city manager, that's thirty thousand dollars.
That's incurred, that's incurred already, right? I mean, that's, when did we execute that?
I think in Jan, in December.
So that's a December expense, yes?
The contract was signed, but we haven't, this is reporting expenditures. So I'm, as far as I know, I don't believe we have actually paid that thirty thousand yet, so.
Yeah, but we should have accrued the expense.
We, we, the way that, as you are maybe aware, that government accounting is on cash basis. At year end is when it really brings back accrual basis where we go through expenses and, and revenues and we accrue it in the right fiscal year. But on day-to-day basis, we basically pay out the invoices that are received to us. On the other hand, if the contract is signed, we create an encumbrance, which is basically saying a commitment to pay.
I mean, encumbrance is from one period to the next, but intra-period, especially when you're closing the month and when you're doing a mid-year, I don't, well, we can, we may disagree, I, I don't think we're on a cash basis. I think we may operate that way, but if you're going to present the monthly or quarterly or semi-annual financials, you would do that on an accrual basis. I mean, the contract is twenty-three thousand dollars-ish?
Thirty thousand dollar contract.
I don't recall the exact number. It's not material to the financials, but I mean, to the extent that, I mean, we are talking in the range of these amounts, I would think that that would be a part of this item. So.
Good, good, good suggestion. One of the things that I will say is that in the projections, there are like some of the things, as you mentioned, that we are, we may be aware, we are aware of some of the salary savings that may include, but we also are not aware of some of the things that may happen also. So it's just, you know, the, doing your projections based on, you know, these are the projections for the savings we have. We did do the analysis, by the way, by each line item.
Oh, I'm sure.
By line item and we presented to our city manager for the salaries and benefits. We also did a line item review for revenues and then some revenues were, you know, twenty percent into it, like building permits and, you know, development-related revenues are not, you know, behind or catching up. So it's kind of hard to, you know, for, for when, when we do budget presentation, media budget updates to, to council or in this case, committee. And this may be a little bit different, which is we, we welcome, you know, uniqueness, but usually what we look at is like globally, what is the, the, the position that the city is in, the general fund? Here are the known things that it's going to happen and here are the, you know, known things. So for example, like in my experience, like I, you know, we don't count the money till it hits the checking account, even though we know it's coming. So, and some agencies may record that as, yeah, we have this money coming, like grant money coming, but really when it hits your checking account, then you count it because things change, sometimes there's a delay that happens. So with that said, you know, I think going forward, I don't remember actually, I was trying to see if we did last year media budget update, but I couldn't find a report because I was trying to see what you're familiar with. But we did do the analysis for line item and going forward, I think that's something that we can present out. When we may not say that this is a projection, we may say this is the revenues to expenses behavior as of this month, as of this period.
Yeah, I would, you know, we've had a little bit of turnover, so looking at the prior period as a, as a guidepost may not be the best source of information. However, at a minimum, I would say there should be a presentation of actuals at a point in time and then our best estimate of all things going forward. Everything that we know, we should know. Known unknowns, we could identify in a narrative. Unknown unknowns are just not out there. But things that are known should be included with the caveat that we all understand that these are projections. I think, that's why I asked, we, we did, we have reasonable certainty over property taxes. It hasn't hit the checkbook yet, but we are putting it there. So I, I don't think that rule holds universally, but what I would say is the rule that we should follow is that anything that we know about should be included. Incidental things like ten, twenty, doesn't, that's not what I'm talking about, but any significant item should be included. That way we get a more comprehensive or a holistic picture of what, you know, where we're at.
Understood, Mayor. We will include that information in the presentation back to the full city council. And just to, for full disclosure, I, the information that we received at the time that this was printed, I didn't feel comfortable putting that information in. I wanted to understand it better, especially as it relates to what we're going to be doing going forward. So I didn't, I didn't, I prefer to not put all the information as opposed to put wrong information in and have people fixate on numbers that may or may not be correct. So I was shooting for a little more accuracy.
That's, that's perfectly reasonable. If you don't feel comfortable, then I, I get that. I, if, if you're on the fence, then we can caveat it and notate it. And I think that's, it's a, it's just something to discuss.
Ian, Ron, I just had one other question. So in relation to our bringing this to the full council, we're waiting, I thought it was going to be the end of March also. So we're waiting until April 4th because that's the climate tech report, because that climate tech phase two is going to affect the mid-year budget?
So the, so the climate tech, there's a couple of reasons. One is because climate tech will need some, we're not sure how much cash from ARPA funds, which is part of the mid-year budget. And so we wanted to bring both of those concurrently, if possible, so that we could see the full picture of the mid-year budget. And climate tech would be one of the line items that council would consider as far as how they want to commit those, those funds. So the, the climate tech project was originally slated to come on March the 27th, but the soonest they're telling me that they can bring it is on April the 4th. So that's the reason why the April the 4th date is being proposed.
Okay. And the other question I had, and Dana probably isn't thinking she's even going to be on the spot today, but I was thinking in terms of just sort of accounting for everything that we know is coming and not coming. Just going back to our Clayton Theater Company, and I know that we invoice them at a much higher amount than, until we made a decision to reduce their fees again. So, and maybe this is like a minor one-off, but is, is that kind of on the books for the nineteen thousand, but it's really going to be a fraction of that? Is that, and are there other things that we've done where we've, we've invoiced at a higher amount because we didn't have those nonprofit rates in place yet?
So I think, I think that was booked after the first of the year, correct? The Clayton Theater Company? So that wouldn't, that wouldn't have been a part of this budget, mid-year budget?
We will do an adjustment.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. I have a lot of questions. Okay, so some of these are questions and some of these are just comments.
Sure.
The, is it possible to get a detailed HCL information that talks about our projected sales tax receipts by vendor? You don't have to do that on the spot, but it is something that I'm interested in.
The HDL report on sales tax projections? We could send you the, we could send the summary sheet that's presented as public information that, because the other things are, you know, confidential sales tax data. So, but we'll be able to send you the projections that they've sent us, which is public document.
Okay. As much detail as available would be great for me. Can you elaborate more on the CALPERS, the timing of the, the expense? I mean, if I recall correctly, the way it works is we have a service fee cost each year and then they will annually adjust and true up the amount of service cost that we would pay and they'd let us know. But I forget the timing of when that happens, when they update their discount rate and mortality table?
Exactly. The CALPERS, so part of the, the CALPERS rate, CALPERS work is doing an updated valuation. Clayton is in a risk pool, so part of the, for the pension. And then for retiree health, Clayton gets its own valuation done. So basically what we do is we get an updated annual determined contribution amount. And last year, for example, CALPERS had a twenty-one percent, what I would say is earnings. And that twenty-one percent was actually a little bit higher because they did not count into private active, private equity, private equity in there. This year, on the other hand, the CALPERS reported a six point one percent decline, which if you take the change is about twenty-eight percent swing. And, and at the moment, that six point one percent is more going to be about seven point two percent because of the losses in private equity. So those changes will be impacting the, a couple of things, impacting the annual determined contribution, but then also impact the, the normal rates, normal rates, which is the normal cost, and that's going to be part of the next year's budget.
So, so what is the timing of both of those actions?
June, we have to make a payment on our annual determined contribution. We are actually, we have consulted out the, the actuarial study. So that usually happens in April and May. And then by June is when we get our report and that's also the report that's used for auditing purposes as well.
So given the fact pattern and that return swing, do we expect the assessment to be higher or lower than what we projected at the beginning of the year?
It is a good question. One of the things that will impact that is the vacancies, you know, like because if they're normal costs.
Yes.
But we will be looking at that. We just had a retiree, not retiree, but we'll, we'll, we'll probably be right on budget, if not maybe slightly over budget. The reason being because we are part of risk pool and our impact on that loss is very minor compared to some of the other agencies in the risk pool fund. We're very small, we're combined with other smaller entities. So to answer your questions, may not be as substantial for us.
Okay.
But if the loss happens next year, again, another six percent loss, because they're projecting about seven percent, let's just say, increase. And then if you take six percent loss, that's about, you know, thirteen percent change. So I believe this year will be okay, but next year we'll be, we'll have a problem if the losses continue to happen.
Okay. We'll cross that bridge when we come to it.
Yes.
I guess, and the other, like, do we have, you know, prior, we did a projection, a one and five-year projection. I'm assuming that that hasn't been updated with any of the new information. I would, I would just recommend that we do that on a regular basis. I don't expect that right now because.
And I'm glad you asked that because as a matter of fact, today I just met with our finance director. So as part of your budget development process and when we come to you is also a long-term, long-range financial planning. And that's also done as part of the council strategic planning session, too. That, you know, it's like in, in my experience, we also presented saying, here's your long-term forecast, it looks like based on 23, here's your five years looks like. And that's something that we just connected today to see how can we use that as part of our budget process, but also with other things as well. The decisions that are going to be put in front of you needs to align with the long-term forecast.
Okay. So that's good. Just, so that's just the takeaway from this, that I, I do think that's a, a very high value. We just, we don't, we haven't had a history of making that our practice, but I do think it's a, it's a good thing to do.
And so do we do that internally, that long-term forecast?
I will do it this year for the city, yes, but I will.
And then Angelina will do it thereafter. Okay, thanks.
And then can you, you mentioned about reallocating some of the money that's in Camp and LEAF. Camp and LEAF are earning substantially a lower amount than what was otherwise available in a equally liquid, equally liquid investment options. I think when we talked last week, you were going to look at what amount of operating cash flow we needed to maintain regular activities and then put some buffer and then everything else into some short-term, low-risk, higher yield investment. Can you give an update on that as far as both what, and you mentioned the immediate action within the next week?
Within this, yeah.
The longer-term action as far as what our practice will be, plus what we'll do in the next either month or quarter as it relates to the same, when we get a higher level of accuracy?
Absolutely. Thank you so much for that. And so again, day-to-day operations and what we, what we are working on is basically trying to see how much cash do we need as an agency for cash flow purposes, like running the city business? And then not to be very aggressive, but more like prudent and then also maybe a little bit buffer because something may happen, come up. But really, one of the huge opportunity we have is that even we invest some of that money, it's going to be, you know, equally liquid security. So if we needed it, we can always access it. So we, we're not going to take an approach where we're very conservative, but more like what is more realistic that we need based on prior transactions or monthly cash flow needs. And, and with that said, our goal is that we started off with five hundred thousand dollars. We have about two points, some two point two million or so, but we now will see like what is that, that sweet spot? Like, is it a million dollars that we need to live in there? Or is it seven hundred thousand dollars we need in there operating cash and then everything else going to equally liquid security? And, and we, that is something that we actually just talked about today, too, so we can expedite it process. One of the things we also doing as part of this process is doing a SWOT analysis on our current investments as well, too. And trying to see which one of those investments need to also be, be looked at and maybe we need to liquidate those and pick, pick up something at maybe at more lucrative for us or with higher interest earnings for us. So those are all the work that, that is in motion at the moment. But we'll start off with five hundred thousand dollars and our goal is that hopefully in a couple of weeks, we'll be ready with, it's not, it's not rocket science and, and we do have access to that money. So it's not like we're making a wrong decision.
Okay. Yeah, because my understanding is about two point four between Camp and LEAF combined. And if we're going to say five hundred now, leaves about one point nine. For, I, I, that sounds exceedingly high for our operating cash flow needs, but you, you have to tell us what you think that is. One point nine probably seems high. A hundred thousand seems too low. It's probably in there somewhere. But I would expect that in the short term, five hundred thousand is an easy move and the next million needs a little more analysis.
Yeah.
So more than a week, but probably not more than two or three weeks.
Yeah.
That would be my expectation of how, how soon we would execute on the remainder of the underutilized. of the underutilized funds.
Yeah, yeah. Our goal is to maximize what we can for small agency.
Can we commit to that?
Yeah, I mean, absolutely. I mean, and that's a management thing, so, but definitely.
I'm asking you.
Yeah, absolutely. I mean, that's, again, I won't be able to do the transfer myself, but I'll work with our team to do that.
Okay, so I, I would like to hear back. We don't have to do it in the meeting format, but if we can even via email, just to confirm that, what, what we land on, and, because I think that analysis will, should be incorporated into the investment policy as well. So whatever we land on, it should probably be some kind of standard, and then whatever that happens to be, it should be documented and, and within our investment policy, because it'll be as part of that as well. Okay, so that was, I think that was all my questions related to the mid-year. Did you have?
Just one more. On, on the property taxes, you were, and I'm looking in notes on page seven in our packet, the city receives approximately six point six cents of every dollar collected, larger shares going to schools, community colleges. You made that sound niche-ish, like, is that low for other municipalities in Contra Costa County? And why is that?
It is. It's based on a formula that was established many decades ago, and it's never gotten changed, and it probably won't ever get changed.
The formula was established by the county?
I think it's a state-based one.
When, when the cities incorporate, they negotiate this formula, so it's, every city has different, like, for example, one of the cities I was in, they actually got almost twenty-two percent of that revenue. So it's, and then the special district I was at, twenty point, twenty point eight cents per every dollar used to come to the special district, which was only Fire and Parks District. So when, when you, six point six percent is our share, so I, when the city incorporated, I, it's a long time ago, but I'm not sure what the, the structure was, but...
And is, do municipalities ever renegotiate those terms? Never?
It's just done deal. That's why agencies go to sales tax, sales tax and other ways, or franchise tax, or utility users tax, you name it. So that's how they, they create capacity for your general fund. That's why a number of cities are challenged to pay for basic services because of their cap on property taxes.
It's a fixed pool, so to the extent that we get a higher share, someone else has to give up share? It's a bad argument.
I just didn't know if there was an opportunity to renegotiate that. Okay, thank you.
Okay, we can move on to investment policy. I have even more questions on investment policy. Did you want to go? All right. So just a comment first?
Yeah.
And I, I, I would kind of be jumping a little bit, but on the, so attachment one is our current policy. Attachment two is, I think, what you've advanced as a proposal for a new policy, right?
Yes.
Okay, so, when, on your budget presentation, on slide, on the slides, I think it's page forty, it's at the end, you list the mission and values. That's not our mission, I don't think. It's not the one that's reflected in the act for. So I would just, as a heads up for that.
I thought I got that from you, from the website, but...
It's okay. It's, it's not substantive, but I would just recommend.
Thank you for pointing that out, though.
And earlier in the presentation, there is a notation to Calistoga instead of the city of Clayton, so I think it's page five, we might want to. So maybe there was some...
Yeah. Page five, oh, the staff report, right?
Yeah. So, I am, I guess I'm not a fan of a wholesale change of, of policy. I'd rather look at a point in time and then look at the changes as they go, because it's hard to do comparisons generally. That's, it's harder to read, so that's a personal preference. Unless there's like significant holistic changes, then I, then, oops, then it makes more sense. But one thing that I've always wanted is, we list several positions within the investment policy, like finance director, city manager, treasurer, I think there's one other one. It's not super clear on who is doing what. It talks about who can do what, but it doesn't actually say who is executing and doing what, and there's overlap. And so when I see overlap, I, I think it, if it is our intent to have overlap, then I think that's fine, but I don't think it is. And we, I think we list broad descriptions for these roles, because, I don't know, probably for reasons, but I think it makes, it would be, it would behoove us to be more clear on who is doing what. Because like, for example, the treasurer has a lot of duties, as it lists in the document, but if, if I look at the history, I don't think our treasurer executes on most of those duties. So I, I think it, like, what I would expect to see is kind of like swim lanes or responsibilities, like a RACI document on who's doing what, and so that we're all clear on who should be doing what. So that, that would be one comment on that one. One of the things that the document talks about is a periodic review of investment results. I don't think we've been doing that. I think you've done it once.
Yeah. But we didn't do it for six, and eight months almost.
Yeah.
Yeah, no, that's...
I don't think we're meeting our policy. So I would suggest that we take that as an action, so that we know that we have to be doing this. It says meet quarterly, review transactions monthly, and review policy annually. That's what the document says. I don't think we're doing any of that, but it would be, I think we should do that. I think those are good things to do. So, I already mentioned the short-term cash flow approach as well. I think that's good. One of the things in the policy document, I'm referring to attachment number one, it says that, hold on, I'm going to pull it up so I don't, I don't get it wrong here. Give me one second, I gotta get to the right page. It's long. Investment objectives under section VI, so six.
Yeah.
It talks about credit risk, and it says, "All investments beyond treasury securities will, will be diversified so that the failure of any one would not unduly harm the city's cash flow." That seems really, it sounds good, but it seems a little vague to me on what diver, like, the definition of how, what we consider diversified, to me seems, it's not very specific on that one, so I would want to shore that up. I'm not exactly sure how, but some kind of, either a rating or some other objective measure, I think, should be as part of that.
So the attachment two, right, that is the new policy under credit risk?
Yes. I'm, I'm looking at attachment one as our current, but do you, I mean, yeah. And, and the reason why I was doing that, because there was a number of things in attachment two that I just didn't like.
Oh, okay, I see what you're saying.
So I'm starting with attachment one.
Yeah.
Because I like our current investment policy, and I think it could be adjusted, but I, but for this, for the update, I would, I would want to make significant adjustments. So I'm, I'm referring to attachment one, just for ease of following. Then, objective two, it says, objective two here for liquidity says that the funds will maintain a liquidity buffer and invest primarily in securities with active secondary or resale markets, dynamic liquidity, right? Sufficient liquidity to meet operating needs, and that whole section B on liquidity. It says, you know, primarily shorter-term securities. How does that reconcile with what we discussed previously on our laddering strategy, where we have, you know, one, I think the bulk of our investments are in CDs, which would not meet this active secondary or resale market criteria? And then two, you know, we're going out to four and five-year durations. I, I think it kind of like, that doesn't seem consistent with objective B here under liquidity. Would you agree with that?
Based on the approach we have at the moment, for investments with four-year terms or five-year terms, it appears it's not in compliance with that.
It just seems a little inconsistent, right?
Yeah, inconsistent, yeah.
And I like the way it's written. I do like a focus on shorter-term durations and ones with secondary markets. So I would take that into consideration as we are rolling over our current portfolio, so that we, I mean, it's, it's not number one, but it's at least number two. And then one of them talks about a weighted average maturity, I'm sorry, I, I wrote it down, but now I can't find it. Weighted average maturity of the funds limited to three years or less? Do you think that we meet that? Or, maybe a better question is, have we ever done a test?
Yes, as part of the audit, we have to disclose that.
Okay.
It's in the act for.
So did we meet it?
You know, I don't remember that on top of, but definitely, that is one of the tasks, because that is a part of the government accounting standard boards, GASB thirty-one, that basically came up. That's when the investment stuff started. Remember, agencies never had anything like that.
Okay.
So GASB thirty-one started there, weighted average, how, how long did you invest it? It's all disclosed in note A of the financial report.
Okay. And I'm not sure if a weighted average maturity of three years or less is the right number. We do say not to exceed five years, and I think that's probably too long, and I think the weighted average maturity of three years is probably too high as well. So I, I don't know what the right number is, but that, that would just be some feedback. Item G? Sorry, going down here. Under, sorry, I switched sections. Now it's under authorized investments, A, B, C, D, E, F, G, H, I, all that. I would strike item G in its entirety.
The pass-through security?
Yeah.
Mortgage-backed securities, yeah. This used to be, I actually remember doing this thing back in the day, but yeah, we don't do this anymore.
Yeah, we should strike that one. I would recommend it. I don't know if you would concur, but that would be my, my opinion.
So if I could, may, so when we strike this out, so what you're saying is that this will be a security that we won't be investing in, and then we'll present this to the council with, so what you're saying is that redline the current policy and bring it to you?
Yeah, I think that'd be a good course of action. And then, let's see here. I think that, Kim, why don't you go ahead and I'll, I'll make sure, because I wrote mine in kind of a stream of consciousness thing, so I need to organize it on the fly.
And mine is back on, again, the PDF, page nine, and I just wanted, it's item number five. I think at the top it says six of nine, but it's actually page nine, interest earnings. And can you just explain that whole paragraph to me, so that I understand it? It was the actual interest earning for prior year was one forty-eight, six, four, nine. Do you see that, item number five?
Oh, should you jump back to the budget presentation?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
But it's interest earnings, and I thought that's kind of...
Yeah, it's related.
Yeah.
Oh, yes, so this is the media budget, right? Are you...
Yes, so it says interest earnings?
Yes.
Just, because I was thinking, I waited, thinking it had a little bit more to do with our investment. So can you just explain, we were saying that the average return on these securities was four percent with a longer-than-one-year term, city's earning collected to date a hundred and six thousand. Was that a hundred and, so I have a couple of questions around that. So the hundred and six, two, five, six, is that for twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three?
So that starts from July one, twenty twenty-two, to February twenty-second, twenty twenty-three. So far, we have collected hundred and six thousand, two fifty-six. If you amortize that over eight months, it's about thirteen, thirteen thousand plus change a month, and then if you take that annually, you're looking at about, very close to, I believe it was hundred and fifty-nine thousand dollars of, in actual interest earnings, in projected interest earnings, but we're projecting a little bit higher than that, because we have been, we met with UBS last week as well, but we have been picking up securities larger than four percent return, and with shorter period, time, we have changed that to three-year terms. So it's, some of them we have picked up has been five percent, so that one percent causes quite a bit of that, I would say, increase in earnings when compared to budget. When the budget was put together, it was at four percent.
Okay. So when, when we say here that we're projected to receive approximately sixty-nine thousand through June thirtieth, how, so we've collected one oh six, is that sixty-nine thousand an additional sixty-nine thousand?
Yes, so from February twenty-second to June thirtieth, we, what we did is basically looked at our investment portfolio, assuming that we are not going to sell any of the underperforming investments. We still will be making about sixty-nine thousand dollars, based on the current basis point that is, it's earning at, and we will have an increase in, when compared to budget, and interest earnings approximately sixty percent. So sixteen thousand of that is a general fund portion of it.
Got it. Okay, thank you.
Okay. Yeah, I, I don't have a specific recommendation, but I do think that we should have something that kind of talks about what our strategy, sorry, what our strategy should be as it come, when, in our rate environment right now. We came to the point, I think, and we had talked about this last week, where we did longer-term investments at lower rates, because that was the best we could get, but I want that, I want us to use judgment and say, when these rates are very low, it doesn't make sense to go into these longer-term, longer-term products that have, and lock in lower yields. And so I don't know how to craft a policy that does that.
A lot of times, and I've been through that, through process, where you've been locked in at lower rate, and then you evaluate the security, and you basically have to decide that, okay, if you sell the security and if you buy something new, what is the...
No, I understand the swap analysis.
Swap analysis, yeah.
Yeah, I understand that, but what I'm saying is, as a policy, rather than get to a point where we're doing that swap analysis, we should, at a point in time, let's go back in time three, two, three years, when interest rates were in the can, and, you know, it would have been, I think it would have been, I want the policy to somehow give the discretion or give the, the guidance to the person making the investments to say, I should not engage in four- and five-year unmarketable products at this really low, historical low rate. I don't know what the policy, I don't know how to craft language for that, off the top of my head.
Yeah, it's a challenge a little bit, because three years from now or so, when these securities were bought, at that time, if somebody was giving you three percent and you're earning like point five percent, you're like, this is a great deal, and the market would probably be at point five percent, but the market swung so much because of the pandemic happened, everything was sort of, you know, so a lot of agencies, the finance directors took that approach, but you're absolutely right, that's just, the crystal ball is not there.
Well, if you were, if you were to say three, if it was, you know, in the three range, then I think I would probably not even make a comment.
Sure.
But because we're at like half, it's a lot easier, or I would feel a lot more comfortable saying, half a percent at the multi-decade historic lows is probably not going to be that low in the three-to-five-year time window. I, I would make that bet. But, you know, I'm not, I don't get paid to do this for a living, so I, I would just, you know, I want, and if we can adjust the term, yeah, the, the duration of what we're talking about to something lower than five years, like, three years, and do a weighted average target that's lower than that, and then also do the periodic updates so that we could rebalance, and then if we go into more marketable products, then I think it gives us that flexibility, a lot more flexibility than we have right now. And, you know, that'll, it's not going to be a guarantee, like, if rates move poorly, then, well, poorly for someone. If rates have poorly, or move significantly, let's say, you know, we may not be on the winning end of that, but I do think that gives us that flexibility to do. So I would recommend that when we come back, that we incorporate that type of language that updates the policy for, for that, you know, that movement. And then the only other thing, so when I, let's see here, let me make sure I covered this. For other authorized investments, I think everything else here seems okay, except that item G one. I don't think we engage in hardly, in, in most of these right now.
No, for, for this city, this type of where we are very limited cash balance, you cannot take a risk to do some of these securities. So but I will say that I have been through even buying, you know, derivatives as an agency. But that, we are not there, we're gonna, if, you know, so we don't have that kind of opportunity here.
So, yeah, camp, life, treasuries, government issued, I think that's all fine. So although I would, you know, lean towards one of the others. So anyways, I think that, do you have?
Yeah, so basically, if I'm, if I could sum it sum it up, if you don't mind. So basically, taking the existing policy, making a red line and adding some of those. As we will see what the policy issues are in there, we'll bring the policy to you. And then the the, you know, some of this thing, how we execute, it's on us and how we execute. But definitely follow the guidance in the policy. And we'll get rid of my picture with the new investment attachment, too. We'll add the picture of the new one, so that's the only thing we'll do.
Okay, sounds good. And then I guess, I think it'd be good to take, we haven't taken public comment. I think it'd be good to, if anyone wants to do that, because that's probably one of our senior. And if, I would say, because we're essentially dividing our discussion into three areas. We want to take public comment, but then if there's other things that we, rather than close public comment, I will table it, and then if there's more on other items, we could bring it back up. So I would do that. So would you like to make a comment?
There we go. Frank Avidia, most of you know who I am. I'm in this industry. I spent twenty-four years at two major Wall Street firms and have my own independent registered investment advisory firm. Not speaking as an advisor right now, let's make that clear. Mr. Mayor, I do agree with striking the mortgage-backed securities. In fact, that's specifically why I came here. When I looked at the newer investment policy, look, unless you guys are going to hire someone full-time and pay them a nice salary to manage this money, there is, and this is not meant to offend anyone, there is no one with the expertise to oversee this. Limiting yourselves to things as simple as rolling treasury bills. Natasha, you mentioned a little over four percent. The one month is actually four point six one nine. The six-month is five point one five, if you participate in the auctions, by the way, which is the way to go, which not all full services brokers are crazy about because they can't make a commission on. But I would agree with the idea that it is best to limit the duration. Don't go beyond three years, weighted average duration, some other computation. Match up your liabilities with maturities. Any excess cash, there are institutional money market funds, you can use those. Research them properly. Again, you need someone to research those. But I would limit what we're doing as much as possible. We're not a big city. We don't have fifty million dollars. We can't go hire BlackRock. You know, I saw that there was talk in here of doing, you know, stock funds and that sort of thing. That'd be great, but again, who's going to pick it for you? So these are just things that I wanted to bring up, and I I do agree with the changes you're making. I would expressly prohibit things like commercial paper in your policy. Even the GSEs, I'm not crazy about those things for a lot of reasons now. Treasury bills, it's understandable why they went CDs. I mean, rates were zero, so you had to go that direction. That's not a liquid market, but the way that the environment is right now and for the foreseeable future, looks like treasury is a good place. I think what you want to do to make this work over the long run is somebody needs to come and talk to the city every so often about what they see happening. Just general economics, where are rates going? Where's the economy going? That stuff matters for sales, sales tax collections and property taxes. I know that when I was on the planning commission, I got beat up once for talking about economics. I had a colleague say that this is not an economic forum. Well, guess what? Economics matters because money is what makes everything go around. So thank you very much.
Thank you. And we did talk when we spoke last week with UBS. I do think having, engaging with them on a periodic basis would be good. And if they're willing to even meet with the committee to give like a brief synopsis, I think that would be a good takeaway as well. Not long, but just, you know, they have all our money. Be nice to talk to them once in a while. So, okay, so I'll table that for now, and then if we, because we're going to talk about some other things, the rest of the items here. But I, one thing I forgot to mention, on the assignments and duties, how, for the, there's four roles, and I was talking about the roles before. I pulled out city council, city manager, city treasurer, and finance manager. City treasurer, it says under the treasurer, they are responsible for the investment of funds, reviews, approves, and makes recommendations regarding the. Okay, nice. Approves the investments of funds and the investment policy. Are they really approving the investment policy? I mean, so Mr. Schafford is our treasurer. He's awesome. But I I'm not sure that he's doing these things. And because they are listed here and it kind of overlaps with the others, it, I think that could cause confusion. So if we want to have the treasurer, and then, you know, what it seems to me is like our intent is to have it as an advisory role. He's not going in and making trades, right?
No, but it's, it is an appointed position by city council, right? As I believe the treasurer is, and the treasurer is primarily, it is pursuant to California Government Code. There's assignments that are for the treasurer itself. So we basically, as I, in a few months that I've been here, we work with the city manager, and we try to get hold of the city treasurer to make some of these investments. And city treasurer, if not available, I mean, that's one of the things that we need to just work on to see we could have regular meetings with the city treasurer. Because, you know, I haven't met with the city treasurer yet. I've been here four months.
Let me, let me refer. Is there any function that you require the city treasurer for that you've been unable to perform because of that?
The, like I said, the the city treasurer is governed by the California Government Code.
Okay, but that's not what I'm asking. Operationally, is there any function that you cannot do without the treasurer right now?
We we can do everything without the treasurer. We just have to list it out, who does what, like finance, finance director, city manager, and, you know, we could list it out. If we are looking at the the original policy, which is the page two, we'll basically redline this how it best fits us with the limited staff that we have. And some of the roles and responsibilities may be dual, but as long as there's adequate controls built in there to mitigate any any internal control issues.
Okay, and do we believe the treasurer is a required position?
Yes, as far as I know, and I'm not an attorney, but I think it is required. So that's one of the propositions that's required.
Okay, so then I think it behooves us to be very clear on what the expectation of the duties are. Because I don't think we do that right now, so. Okay, all right, cool. So then we can, the other, the other two items that we had was the fee study in ARPA. Do you have questions on the fee study? Or ARPA? Okay, let me see. I actually didn't have any questions on the fee study. We're, I think we're waiting to hear more information. I I looked at the timeline, and so I think that.
I think that was a request from the commission committee last time, so I just added the timeline. And and one of the things we also just wanted to cover on the fee study really briefly, Mr. Mayor and council member, is that this is for Clayton fees. And one of the things that was made clear from the budget finance committee is that it's, you know, we also looked at, should we look at other regions? It's not. It's look at what Clayton does and what the fees are, and then full cost recovery. And that was the direction for the council.
Yeah, and I think I'm comfortable with that. Well, I think it's, right now, we're just.
Yeah.
In a holding pattern until we get more information.
Yeah.
So and the, so if you didn't, I don't know if you had anything on fees? Okay, so then ARPA?
So Natasha and Angeline and Ron, do you know the total amount we started with in ARPA funds? Is it the one point four six seven oh two four?
Yes, that's the first distribution that was received.
That was the first distribution. And so the balance today, I'm looking at the pandemic reserve fund analysis, which I think is in a couple of locations in our packet. So what is the remaining amount that we have today in that fund?
It's, right now, looks like we have ending balance of one point four million from this year, the revenues that came in this year, plus two hundred and four thousand. There was a balance remaining from last year.
So we still have one point four plus another two hundred and four thousand and two one?
Let me see.
That doesn't, that doesn't sound right.
No.
Oh, one point four six six, I'm sorry. It's the very bottom, there's a balance, net balance, because we did appropriate two hundred and five thousand dollars. So you'll see at the very bottom of the table, net balance is off now.
Okay, so we, and again, because, again, this is, you know, I wasn't here a year ago. So we started with one four six seven, and we used one point two six two one oh three in the previous fiscal year. And so our remaining balance, so there's a balance from that, and then there's a balance of unallocated funds. So what's the?
There's an additional two hundred that was appropriated.
So it's like a two hundred and a two hundred?
No, it's just, so the original.
Two oh four.
Yeah, we got two equal tranches, one point four six million. Of the first tranche, one point two six was spent on this litany of items, which, looking over your shoulder, are those things there? And then, in addition to that, we appropriated an additional two hundred and five thousand. So that, the one point two plus the two oh five is right around the one four six-ish. I'm doing like head math there.
Okay, yeah.
And then then we received the second equal tranche in July first, and that's an additional one point four six seven.
And has any of that money been allocated yet?
Well, about, I'm doing math.
One thousand of it.
Four hundred and six or something.
Yeah.
Something like that.
Four hundred and six dollars?
Uh, four hundred and, four hundred and change.
Okay, so the majority, overwhelming majority of it is still.
Yes.
And we are going to determine how to allocate that when, at the.
At the April fourth meeting.
At the April fourth meeting.
So, yeah, and so one of the reasons why I asked for us to push ARPA discussion of this and to have it at the same time as we have the climate tech discussion, among two, among other things as well. Because rather than address it piecemeal, I think it makes the most sense to look at it holistically, to say like, here's all of our wants, here's all of our means, and to see prioritize what where it lines up. Because the climate tech projects will almost certainly require an investment from the city. Some amount, and, you know, who knows? And then we get, so then we'll have, that's a, that's an ask, like, hey, we need money to do this. And then there'll be other things that says, hey, we need money to do that, and this and that. And we'd lay them all out at the same time, and then we could like do good decision-making for what we want to spend it on. Rather than look at like a little bit here, a little bit there.
Piecemeal, right. So perhaps in the goal-setting session, is that an opportunity then to be looking at this remaining ARPA funds?
I think what we'll do is talk about goals in general, but we will not have information from climate tech available at that time. So it's hard to say.
And we don't even have a guesstimate as to what their costs might be?
No, they're still working on that information. And the the goal-setting will talk about other things apart from climate tech. So then, when we come on the fourth, you'll have the benefit of the goal-setting discussion with the organizational assessment and all that goes with that, council's goals and priorities, along with climate tech, will be a list of things, the costs. And then council at that point can decide, we want to, on April fourth, spend all or part of the one point four six six million, or you could say we want to.
Spend none of it?
Continue the discussion into the budget process, which is going to be ongoing over the next couple of months. So there's a lot of opportunity to make decisions there.
And I think with ARPA funds, and maybe, correct me if I'm wrong, but do they have to be, do the needs have to be identified by twenty twenty-four and the money spent by twenty twenty-six?
No, that that is not the case.
That's not the case, so.
It used to be, and they changed the rules.
And they changed rules. So what are the new rules?
The new rules are that the money has been allocated in such a way that it can be used, whatever, whatever the council wants to use it for, whenever the council wants to use it.
Okay, thank you.
Zero restrictions.
Zero restrictions. Thank you.
Yeah. Okay, and I, again, I think we're waiting until we get more information to really. I think this is good to have this laid out. The only thing that, two things stand out, we have DocuSign now? Why am I not DocuSigning documents?
I'm not aware that we do have DocuSign, but it may.
It's on, it's on the, it's right there.
I know, it was part of this project to do this, but I'm not sure that we have it as a city, as a normal operating practice.
All right, I like DocuSign. It's nice. Okay, the only other thing that I remembered was, I was hoping that we could have a discussion of all of our, I don't know how to describe them, the ongoing service contracts that the city has for people on retainer, essentially. We had talked about this, and it's things like where we we authorize a certain amount of spend via a certain vendor on demand so that you guys don't have to come back to the city or come back to council every time. I'd like to do a review of what those are as well, as part of our budget discussion, because I think it it behooves us to kind of examine with a critical eye every once in a while, these contracts in perpetuity.
So were you talking about like vendor?
Yes.
Service contracts?
Yes. If you have a snazzy name for that, then feel free, I just don't know what to call it.
Basically, the, so the, we, we as most of us, as like a contract city, you know, we have a number of vendors that support us in various functional areas of the city, engineering, maybe in finance and other areas. We also have some contracts in regarding, you know, some of the services that, you know, district administration, for example, CFD or.
Yeah, I'm not referring to like engineering or legal services. I think those are kind of like on their own animal. I'm talking about more like.
We debatement?
Yeah, that's why I need like a cool name, like a service contract. I don't know.
So service delivery contracts, so like we debatement and some other contract that we have that provide services. Yeah, we have street maintenance or street sweeping or.
We have on retainer, retainer may be the wrong word. Like, if there's a pothole that needs to be fixed or some minor street repair, we have pre-authorized to spend via a vendor, who I don't recall the name. Or if there's tree service that needs to get done, we've contracted with Warner to provide services on demand, right? And I think there's a few other vendors where we've done lighting. We have these essential, these contractors, is retain it the right word?
Yeah, retain, I'd say is on-call services contract.
On-call services. And so for those, that's different than legal services.
Sure.
And that, you know, so I'm mostly focused on the former, like those things. Those are the things that I think it would, it'd be nice to have kind of a comprehensive list of things that we have so that we can evaluate if that's, if we are, you know, satisfied with what we're doing.
So part of your budget process, one of the things that we just talked today is line item budget that we developed. We actually developed like who we are paying in particular budget, so those will be easy to put together.
Okay, all right. And so I tabled public comment earlier. I'd reopen again if anyone, if you have any more public comments, not, I would, I would close public comment. Okay.
There's no one on Zoom.
Okay. So I don't have any further questions. Do you have what you need in terms of all of these areas? I know it's a lot.
Yeah, no, we got it. And only thing that will not go to city council on April fourth, if we cannot make it to the meeting in in March, will be the investment policy. But we're hoping that we can bring you the revised investment policy in in March. I'm not sure what the date is.
March twenty-seventh.
Twenty-seven, because the the meeting for city council is on April fourth. So we'll just have to see, can we bring that investment policy to you in March twenty-seventh? So we can take everything to council at one time, and we don't have to.
I would suggest, and I would, if it's possible, if you want to send, because you will have that draft probably much earlier than that date. So I would send the red line to us separately, not together. If you send it to us separately, then we can each give feedback independently. And I think that will help so that we're not, it's more iterative. I think that'll be a better, a better result.
As long as both committee members are not on opposite ends, I think we'll be.
Exactly.
Like, put it together. If you agree with most of the comments that were provided.
I do.
And both vice versa, then we'll be. And both vice versa, then we'll be able to do that.
And Nataish, one last question, master fee schedule. You alluded to earlier, do you know when we're going to see a presentation of that? Did you set a date for?
I think there's a, there's a.
When is it?
There's a calendar, I think, in the staff report. But we are definitely working on a, I would say, very aggressive schedule. Part of our work, I think the huge part of the work is the, is to align the fee schedule with the budget calendar. And so make sure that when we bring it to you, the budget, proposed budget has the fee numbers in there. But we got to make sure that you agree with the fee numbers before it goes in the budget. So it's like a domino effect a little bit, but we're trying to have a very aggressive. I think part of our big work is getting the right labor cost, you know, just making sure that we capture all the costs. The other part of it is just making sure we work with the departments and making sure that departments do a good job to estimate the number of hours it takes to provide services.
Yeah, it's important to get cost recovery, so.
So that is, it looks like March twenty seventh, the next budget and audit committee meeting will be the first draft.
First piece of it, we may, I think at that time we are presenting to you the labor methodology.
At that same meeting, did you say?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Because once we, once you bless it, let's just say, we won't be able to go back and change it. No, that's, that is it. So we assume that you as a committee members, finance committee, that once you agree with the direction, we are good to prepare the document based on your direction. Then you can work with city council for that.
Okay.
Yeah, the fee study, like we have a lot of fees. We both have a, I mean, the breadth is very wide. I don't know, it just seems, it seems like, it just seems like a lot of fees.
It is a lot of fees.
I have no, I'm not going anywhere with that.
And will that be part of the recommendation maybe is to consolidate?
The, there are some opportunities with that, but we actually been very good about making sure that if we move something that should not be paid by taxpayers, like general property taxpayers to subsidize something, we have not, so.
I think that's okay.
You know, so we'll go through it. But, you know, this is on working with the departments. So for example, I'll be working with the police chief over here saying, these are your fees and this is your cost per employee. And what does it take you to do a fingerprinting? If we do even fingerprinting, right, as I say. And there's going to be maybe a fee in there that he's like, oh, we are doing this service for the, for the community, but we just have to see is there a legal way we can collect? Because some of those fees are governed at the state level. For example, document fees, you cannot just charge more for PRA, right? Because it's just, it's part of your, so there's things like that that we have to make sure that we look into.
With the chief here, do we charge fees for alarm monitoring?
We do.
Do we? You're supposed to register with the city.
And if it goes off too many times, you get dinged.
All right.
Too many false alarms.
That happened to us, I used to live in Sacramento. Anyways, I'll tell you that story later. All right, thank you. Good, good, all right, so let's see. I will adjourn the meeting, five thirty four. Thank you.